It is. 15 PM, October 3rd, Monday. We do have a quorum, and I'd like to call this workshop session of the Lewisville City Council Board Order. First up on the agenda is discussion of regular agenda items and consent agenda items. Go ahead and move through that. Council, Public hearing number one. That's the landfill.
Mayor, on this one, I believe there's going to be a separate motion that we're going to be providing you guys than what was provided in the recognition. Richard's going to talk about it in open so that the public can hear it during the meeting. But basically, this property abuts our future corporate drive extension, and they have agreed to give us some of our needed easements through this any very slight plan and process and through the zoning process, so that will just document that.
Good. All right. Consent agenda. Item three, agreement between Lewisville and Matthews Development. Item four, CDBG.
I have some concerns about this COVID activity. Talk with the city manager, Claire. It's half a million dollars, and 1.7% has been spent to that. Sorry if I got my numbers correct. That sets a business spending up on all those four roofs. I'd like to see them held to higher standards if we're going to continue spending them, giving them the opportunity to serve the community. I'd like to see at least quarterly reporting or some sort of ask for help if they don't know what they're doing. But I was very, very disappointed in that, in those four organizations. So that's my comment around that particular item.
Appreciate it.
And I had several questions. I had a couple of questions, but we already discussed it. Cover.
Ashley, as far as reporting goes, I think we can, since most of them are required to do monthly reporting, that should help at least with us holding the standard there. For those in the public who might be listening to this, there are some check marks on the federal dollars that help us move forward through that process. And of course, when we look at grants again for this coming year, the CDBG will look at performance over patch years to determine if there will be continued funding for those organizations in that way.
And the thing about this is this is specifically the COVID funding.
Yeah. So we need to dig in, get a little bit more information. I'm hearing some disconnects between what agencies think is acceptable and what staff thinks is an acceptable level. There are requirements, but I'm hearing a disconnect between what staff thinks the requirements are versus what the agencies are thinking of the requirements. So there probably needs to be some clarification in the conversation.
Exactly.
But regardless, here we are, what, nine months into the process? And it's a tough hole for staff to dig out of. It's a tough hole for us to deal with, so we definitely need to put a little pressure on it.
Do we have any kind of grading system? We do for them?
You should pull this if we want to discuss it.
Fair.
Okay. Then let's pull it.
Yeah, pull it to, I'm going to check item.
On board.
That's all I got to say.
It's our annual dance.
Well, I had a dance with the Lexical Companies.
I think all of Texas does. Item six, approval of the AIA agreement for construction services for City Hall basement renovations.
I put a ghost out there by that. Have we worked in the contract that they have to be friendly to our ghosts there?
No.
You know, we don't want to have an upcharge on that, so we did not. I already turned the ghost.
Are we going to have to pull this one too? I mean, it is October, so, all right. Item seven, economic development agreements with 280 Corporate.
I did have a couple of things, but I talked with the city city manager. How would I be good with that?
This took us a significant amount of time to get to the contracting stage, but this was originally brought to council several, I mean, about a year ago.
Item eight, amendment two to the CMAR.
This is guaranteed maximum. They do realize it.
For this space.
Yes.
Item nine, temporary services for Labor Administration to ANA Associates.
This is exactly the same contract you have before, the same services. We just attached the wrong version of the contract, so this is a cleanup.
Okay, let me ask you this. Is this going to help with all the mowing and everything?
Yes.
Okay, because that's the number one complaint I've received the last two months.
That and streetlights.
Mine's been of all the mowing and stuff like that.
Intersections. In fact, I think we have a solid red over here today, but that's a different issue.
The hope is, I mean, obviously, when you hire temps, they don't necessarily stay, and so you have to, you really have to fit, really the idea is to bring in temps for jobs that can lift some of the, or make more space for our other employees to be able to do work. I will say, though, that the contract, a lot of the mowing on mediums is related to contractor performance, and we're having, we've been having a problem with the contractor performance, but they're trying to get caught up at this point.
It's not just me.
You know, the parks and stuff, but a lot of the mowing that they're talking about, though, too, if you'll go and drive through other people's yards and stuff, too, it's the patches of those weeds. But mowing is, and the weeds are like, because they grow like super.
Weed.
All right. Item 10, two-year bank depository contract.
I mean, outside.
Item 11, variance to Code Section 6103. Reports. I'm going to start with Mr. Troyer tonight. That way I can skip everybody. Just have him do it. And then we do not have any closed session at this time. Workshop session, item B, discussion of For the Love of Lewisville event, and that's our Neighborhood Services Manager, Ashley. She's going to be presenting.
I have your topic. Yes. I'll get a little fog back in here. All righty, so For the Love of Lewisville event, what is this? So this is a day of community service for volunteers to come together and serve our community. It's mainly minor cosmetic home repair projects, improvements, yard work, and community-wise projects such as projects. So a little history on how our model came about. Sorry, that type is a little small. But Make a Difference Day, it started in 1992 as a national day of community service held every year in October. Mesquite has a Dressing Mesquite Day. 2022 is their 18th year. And in 2018, they had 1,100 volunteers. They did 98 homes, and area businesses provided $50,000 in monetary and in-kind donations. So we had a nonprofit here in Lewisville called Arseva. They were founded in 2011, and they participated in Dressing Mesquite Day from 2011 to 2015 and did 15 homes, and then they moved here to Lewisville. And we did projects, I was on the board for the nonprofit. In 2016 and 17, we worked in the Tanglewood neighborhood, and we did 10 homes. We scented house numbers on the curb. We cleaned up overgrown trees. We did Alvin Turner Senior Park cleanup. We painted the basketball lines on the basketball court there. We did lots of things. And then in 2018, we moved over to Lakeland Terrace neighborhood, and we did four homes, and we did a couple of projects at Central Elementary right there. So in 2020, right before the world shut down in March, we did one event here in Lewisville in the Berry Heights neighborhood. It's just north of here, Jones, Ferguson Streets. And we did five homes, and we had two volunteer groups. Let's make sure that this video is going to work for you guys.
I've been in the community all the time, you know, as a police, as a, this is my district, and just seeing the positive impact it's having on the community, from adults to their kids, coming out here to help others in the community, it just was a very positive impact.
Oh, it means so much. It's like, somebody cares. I need help to do the top of my house because I can't get on a ladder. And here they are doing the whole house, and I'm just thrilled.
We've got representatives from all over the city, whether it be code enforcement, enhancement program folks. Everybody's involved, and even volunteers from the surrounding community came out today. And like I said, it's just everybody's, you know, kind of came together and doing it for a good cause. And I told her, it's easy to buy into something like this when you actually see it. You can talk about it and see it in a pamphlet or something, but when you actually see what's, you know, firsthand what's going on, it's really a good thing. Very impressive.
Good to see Officer Hopper again. So that was our 2020 event, and then things happened, so we haven't been able to do this event until this year. So we're really excited to be bringing this back this year. So talking a little bit about our process, we look at, we choose neighborhoods right now because it's a smaller, it's very new event still. We're looking at targeted neighborhoods, so we're going back to Berry Heights. It was very successful in that neighborhood, so we're really excited to get back in that neighborhood. And then we also are going to Lakeland Terrace Two, which is right just north of Bel Air and 35 area. So we work with our equipment department, and we also look at our census block, LMI, low and moderate income percentages, to see what layers so that we can make sure that we're meeting the most need in our community. So we also, so we sent out letters to those two neighborhoods explaining what the event is. We submit an application. We are prioritizing seniors, veterans, and those with disabilities or functional challenges. And then we go out, when they submit their application, we go out and meet with them. We see their home, we see the need that they have, and then we work with volunteer groups, building up their volunteers, learning their skills, so that we can assign them to the home that they are the best fit for. And then we make sure we get the volunteer lead out with us to go meet the homeowner, finalize that scope of work, and their list of items that they're going to need for that project, and then staff goes and purchases the necessary supplies. So right now, we received 18 applications, and we have one park project. We're going to be in Ralden Park, which is right next to Lakeland Terrace, and we're going to be doing some, we've been working with Denise over at the Grand. We're going to be doing some interactive art down the sidewalk by the playground equipment over there. And then, so based on the 18 applications, we're able to assist 11 homes that have been assigned to volunteer groups. And the additional houses that we were unable to assist due to skills of volunteer groups, people had some pretty high need in those two areas, so we were not able to help them some of those. So we, Valley Creek Church, our next step centers, they're always great. Their event is the weekend before ours, their day of community service. So they're going to be helping seven of those houses that we were not able to help. So here's a quick map of our two neighborhoods, so just can I give you a visual? This is Lakeland Terrace Two, and this is Ralden Park. We'll be up here by the playground equipment, doing some painting there. And then Berry Heights is just north of City Hall. Here's some pictures of some of the work that we're going to be doing. There's a lot of debris cleanup. There's a ton of exterior paint, so scraping, painting, some minor fence repairs. And then this is a vent area, so we'll be helping replace that vent and painting that house. So our volunteer groups, we're really excited. We have some church groups, and then we also have some businesses that are going to be helping. So Northview Baptist, North Point helped in 2020, and they're coming back to help again. Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, Cardinal Health, Prototype IT, Orthofix. We're really excited, Journey to Dream, the kids really, from House Place to the homeless shelter out there, they are really excited about helping. So they'll be doing the painting at Ralden Park, and half of them will be assigned to another house with a group to do some painting. And our directors, our directors are going to have a house this year going to be helping Some timeline, so our event is going to be on October 22nd, in a couple of weeks. We'll meet here at City Hall for kickoff. Everyone is welcome to come. We have breakfast provided, and then at 7:30, volunteer groups will head out to their projects. Work will be done. 11 to 12, we'll have lunch provided, and then hopefully around 2 o'clock, projects will be finished. And we just hope to continue to grow this. You see, Mesquite has been doing this for so many years, and they are doing 100 houses. So hopefully, that's the goal for us. We're going to not have to choose targeted neighborhoods. We're going to open the applicant, the application to any homeowner and any volunteer group, volunteers that are not associated with the volunteer group. We hope to get them paired up with volunteers. We get calls all year round from people wanting to volunteer and do work in our community. So hopefully, this will be a great way to start signing them up, getting them connected with volunteer groups, so that they continue all year round, not just in October, helping our community.
It was important for us to make sure that we were doing this in a stair-step method so that we don't screw it up on year one if we do 98 homes, and the logistics seem to be more than what we can do. So we're trying to grow it every year to where we do think it'll end up being similar to what Mesquite's doing. And also wanted to offer to the council, if you do show up, you're welcome to join the director's group.
Oh, good.
And we can all work on it together.
We did this for a number of years. I was looking around to see if Jackie was here.
He's not.
Because we used, at Northview, we used to partner up with the city, with Jackie, and get those that had some code enforcement problems or complaints or whatever that were not taken care of in one year.
Yeah, we're really excited to bring this back, and hopefully it can be more than just one day a year, but we're really excited to bring this event back.
If any other groups or people wanted to volunteer, where would they reach out to?
This year, we're keeping it closed for volunteer groups. Hopefully, next year, we can open it up and to start helping build volunteer groups. This year, we're just, like Claire said, keeping it smaller so we can be successful on our projects.
But if they wanted to be notified for next year, reach out to you?
Yes. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Yeah, we look forward to seeing all you guys there.
Look at that, she just threw down a challenge. All right. Item C, review of 2022 Police Services Survey and Proposed Recommendations, and we have, James is presenting the PowerPoint. Mr. Kuckey.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I think Chief Bieber's going to talk about the recommendations at the end. I want to give you a very brief summary of the 2022 Police Services Survey. There's 40-plus pages of tasty statistical goodness in your packets that you can read on your own. We're going to hit the high points. Okay, so first off, as with many of our surveys, this is conducted only online, which makes it an opt-in survey, so it's not scientifically valid. We give you a margin of error. We can tell you with more than 800 responses, there's a lot of anecdotal value to it. We have 36 total questions. That's quite a bit for one of our surveys, but we had very little attrition. Most people who started it also finished it. They felt very strongly, they don't want to share their opinions. I did include one that was screened by a qualifier question, included a few open-ended questions, which are always tricky to work with, but we managed to get some good data there. Ran it back in June, right up through July 1st. We did it in both English and Spanish. We haven't been doing this before. We're starting it now. Didn't have a lot of Spanish response, about 10, but we're going to keep doing it. We think that was the first time out of the gate, and it'll get better as we move along. We also tried something different this time. We tried to really focus on apartment complexes. We found that apartment residents are generally not big participants in surveys, so we prepared some posters, and we put them in mailrooms. If you ever lived in an apartment, you always go to the mailroom. You might never go to the laundry room or the office, but you always go to the mailroom because that's where your mail comes in. So we put posters at the 10 largest. We didn't, don't want to go to every single one of the 98 apartment complexes just yet. This was a trial, I believe. So the 10 largest, and we only hit the second week of the two. There's a printing delay in getting the posters. But I will tell you that we could see statistically there was a significant increase in the number of apartment residents who took this survey compared to the previous survey. Not where we want it to be yet, but we followed this up with the 2022 Resident Satisfaction Survey, the online version, and we put posters out of the 25 largest complexes for both weeks, and we saw more growth, so we're happy about that. 811 responses received. Oh, thank you. I don't want to touch it anymore because I will tap it twice and we'll be all messed up. There are certainly things you need to understand when you do a survey, an opinion survey. A survey is a snapshot in time. That's why they're usually conducted over a period of three to four days if you can, no more than a week. We do ours for two weeks because it's an opt-in survey, and we're trying to get a large number of responses. So as a snapshot in time, if something happened to really impact people, it can impact your results. So a national news story, a big local incident, we had a survey a couple of years ago, that the day we put the survey out, there were two major violent crimes in Lewisville, and our crime numbers didn't look very good in that survey. But the one with Ford One After looked pretty darn good. So this time, we had the school shooting in Uvalde that happened during the survey window. Obviously, an emotional impact on a lot of people. What we saw here is there was a lot more concern about school safety in this survey than in the previous surveys, and this is most likely why, because they saw that on the news and worried could it happen again. Now, the parade shooting in Illinois happened after our survey window. Had it been during the survey window, we might have seen a bump on that, but in this case, we did not. All right. Here's your key findings. First off, Lewisville residents that took this survey said they feel very safe in the city of Lewisville. All parts of the city, daytime and nighttime. Now, they feel safer during the day, and that's been true of every survey that any city has taken. During the day, you can see better, you feel like you're more comfortable, you control your surroundings somewhat as opposed to night, and they feel safer the closer they are to home or the more familiar the setting. So between their own neighborhood and other neighborhoods, about a 20-point variance. Even though neighborhoods might share a border, that's them, this is us, we're safe. I don't know about those people. So the familiarity's a big deal. Commercial districts, pretty good sense of safety because people go there quite a bit. What we also saw, if I've been on a different slide, I'll give it to you now, but on the next slide, I'll skip it, that there was increased concern about crowds. Events or locations where there's more crowds, we saw a little bit of a decline in some areas, lower than other categories for safety. So school events, festivals and events, and shopping districts, we saw there's a concern about being around crowds, and that could be because of the news, could be because we're still recovering from the whole COVID thing, but we saw that quite a bit. We did see that when we asked people during the time you've lived here, has Lewisville become safer or less safe or the same? And we had fewer people this time said safer, 18%, and we had more people, 32%, who had said it'd become less safe, which is interesting. You'll see later on, that doesn't reflect the reality of the numbers, but it reflects the perception at the time the survey was taken. And we'll get back into this, I touched it, we'll get back into this in a minute. This one down here, this last bullet point, the number one concern that residents voiced was violent crime. If you're ever worried about crime, the violent ones are the ones you're worried about the most. But they also, when asked how effective the police department is with various types of crime, they gave the police department an extremely high effectiveness rating for violent crime. So we should feel good about that. They're worried about this, they see that we're very effective in that area. So that's a good thing. On the other hand, vehicle burglaries, a high area of concern, and we were rated as being relatively less effective with vehicle burglaries. We have two major highways, lots of commercial parking lots. That is the bane of our day, is having those vehicle burglaries. The police department itself got very strong ratings in all evaluation areas. We asked people about professionalism, courtesy, and helpfulness, and they scored very well. The overall satisfaction rating, almost 90%. That's really good, especially in a day and age when a lot of departments across the country are very lucky to get 70% in a positive rating. We got 87.86%. Now, here's one that, as a communicator, just drives me crazy, but we know what's happening. We asked people, where do you get information about crime and safety? And we asked people, what are the most accurate sources of crime and safety? And it was an inverse relationship. They said the most accurate are the police chief emails, and my neighborhood resource officer, and the police department official website and social media. The least accurate is all those people on Facebook. Where do they get their information? All the people on Facebook. And way down at the bottom is all the official sources. There's some recommendations that address that. It's a totally inverse relationship. They recognize they're using unreliable sources, but they keep using them. So I don't know, this is the sugar or whatever, but something's got to be going there. And then this one is a very important one. We know from the crime statistics that the rate of crime has gone down over the past three years. It's not like it's dropping off the floor, but it's gone down over the past three years, and that's a good thing. Now, if you actually compare the number of murders, that's the one everybody's scared of, you compare the number of murders now to the 1980s, there were more murders in the 80s than there are now, and that's with about 35,000 fewer residents. I'm not saying more per capita. There were more actual, count them on your hand, murders then than now. So clearly, we're a safer community, but people don't see it that way, especially the longer they've lived here. People who lived here in the 60s, 70s, and 80s, think back and remember a time when, according to them, you never locked your door, you knew everybody, and there was never a crime. Newspapers tell a different story when you look back in those newspapers today, but that's what they remember, because they remember an incredibly safe, almost Pollyanna-type of situation, and today, we're not that, therefore, things are worse. That's a perception. We can't do much about the perception except on the communication side. So the overall safety grade, 93.81% satisfaction rating. That is the percentage of people who said they feel safe or very safe in Lewisville as a whole. 93.81%. I like that number. I love 100%. I don't expect it, but 93.8 is very good. And you'll see the chart here, it's gone up pretty steadily. A teeny decline from 96.04 to 93.81 from last year to this year, but that's less than three percentage points. If there were a margin of error, that would be within the margin. So we were 80% back in 17, 93% now. That is definitely good numbers. And the positive intensity, the number of people who said they felt very safe, 57%. So more than half of your constituents, according to the survey results, feel very safe in the city of Lewisville as a whole. This shows the safety rates for other areas again. Daytime is orange, nighttime is green. You can see, at night, they feel less safe. In their neighborhood, 95% during the day, 85% at night. That 10% difference is pretty common. It's 20% in retail areas. Old Town, 96% said they feel safer, very safe walking around Old Town. At night, it's only 74%. So you see that same drop everywhere, and that's not just us. Parks, events, LISD functions, pretty much everywhere during the day, the lowest number you get is 84%. And 84% is still pretty good. Our goal is to hit 90% in all of these, and we're pretty close on a lot of them. You also see where crowds come in, retail areas and festivals and, well, crowds, school functions. Okay, so we'll bounce to the next one, which is recommendations. Here's where Kevin Bieber is going to take over.
Yeah, so after looking at the survey results, we identified several common themes that we need to focus on. We'll start off with hiring and retention, that there should be a continued emphasis on that. Right now, we're 17 police officers down, 10 dispatchers, and two open records clerks. So it's quite a few in the police department. We've been doing career fairs, we do the LISD Career Center. What we try to do there is get people in the door. I mean, someone can come right out of high school and join detention, dispatch, things like that, and that should be a breeding ground for us as police officers. We recently attended the Sam Houston State University Career Fair. We do that every year. Sam Houston is a really big criminal justice school, so, you know, we've had mixed luck there. We've got UNT Dallas, they've got a career fair coming up. But what we're seeing, especially in today's market, it's really crazy right now in public safety. I don't know how else to describe it. We've got departments offering $10,000 signing bonuses, and those are the ones we're competing with. We've gotten at least eight officers from DART since we started our lateral entry program. They now top out at $108,000, which is more than what we top out. So we don't know how that's going to affect some people. I think we'll still get some people because, you know, a lot of people just don't want to be transit cops, quite honestly. But some are in it for the money. And then when we started our lateral entry program, we were one of the few departments that actually had it. Right now, virtually every department has lateral entry. So we expressed all those concerns last weekend with the compensation firm that was in town, so they're looking into that. They heard our concerns, so we'll see what recommendations they may have going forward. The next category, officer engagement and outreach. It's our attempt to humanize the badge, and we do several things. The pandemic killed us in 2020. We had to stop all of those. We're now expanding our Coffee with Cops to more evening and afternoon-type things, some weekend things, to get more people going. The Coffee with Cops, we were sending the same people every time, and we want to expand that and get more people going. We started some new events. This year will be our first year in the Faith in Blue. some new events. This year will be our first year in the Faith in Blue Weekend, and that's coming up this next weekend. We've got events planned at CCA, a town hall event at Servant House Church, and another thing at Salvation Army. So really trying to get out there and get our officers out in the community. How do we track that? We recently, I guess it's probably been a year now, we created a PPI nature code, and that's Positive Police Interaction. And that's when an officer gets out and plays basketball with a kid, you know, something like that, that it's no enforcement, it's all positive. We want to start tracking those, so we created that code to do so. Recently, we've been approached by the Boys and Girls Club about maybe some sort of partnership there. We're in the very, very preliminary stages of looking at that. We also want to do increased public education, and we've talked about this prior internally, about maybe having a second Citizens Police Academy. A lot of departments will do one, summer, fall area, and then do one in the spring. We're going to consider adding that. Those are very manpower-intensive, but well worth it, I think. We've recently been doing a lot of new Rotary Club presentations. They have an interest in specific areas of the department, like detention, crime scene processing, and things like that. So they've been doing presentations there. But once again, that's a very limited audience, and we want to get out more and do other things. Increased public information. So as you all know, we've had issues with our CAD system, and we're going through overhaul of that. So all of our crime mapping has been down because of that. So we should be back up and running with that, hopefully in May, if everything stays on the timeline. And we'll be able to get the crime mapping back up and going. And another thing I want to do is retool the Chief's Weekly Update. So when we used to do that, it was really focused more externally and less internally. Now it's really becoming an internal communication. We want to put more crime stats on it. And the problem with that, though, is the media sees it, and then they start asking about it, and it generates quite often stories that maybe they wouldn't have heard about And then we want to focus on the feel unsafe areas of the city. And there's a lot of things we can do with some of our partner departments here in the city. And we want to focus on quality of life issues. And it's a proven method to reduce crime. If you take care of the little things, it helps with the big things and the more major crimes. And lastly, the streetlight survey. We're trying to figure out a way to do that. I'm working with ITS to see if there's a way to do it. There is on our app, and I can't remember what it's called.
Rock's holding.
There is a way to do it, but you can't drill down enough to get a streetlight pole number and things like that. So we're going to see if there's a better way of doing that, because we know citizens, whenever it's dark, they don't feel as safe as they do when the streetlights are working. So when they're out, our goal is to get them fixed as soon as possible, and we want to expedite that. So with that, I think we're both finished, and entertain any questions?
One question, James. So when you did the survey, did you have a way to track the neighborhood of where some of the respondents were from? I know you focused in on some harbors, like by neighborhood or zip code or something like that?
We did. Now, zip code, we do anyway. It's not always as helpful as you'd like it to be, we do it. One of the opening questions we put was, you know, would you be willing to tell us, you know, based on your results, you've said you feel unsafe in certain areas, would you be willing to tell us the name of your neighborhood, apartment complex, or the nearest major intersection? And we got, I guess, about 200 responses to that, something like that. And we've mapped them out, and there's not really a lot of commonality, but there are certain areas where there's more clustering than others. And that's what we mean by a feel unsafe area. An area where the crime is not necessarily higher, but the people in that area feel as if it is. So we've got some correlation. It's not perfect, but more than we've had in the past.
Yeah, and the reason I ask is specifically for nighttime, because it's probably more of a lighting issue than the actual safety issue. And maybe if we can find the area where those scores are the lowest, maybe we can focus in on working to create, I guess, better lighting situations using the new LED lights instead of what we have now. Because I know we have that in our neighborhoods, and I also know that people who are, like the crimes of people getting their cars broken into, I watch the Neighbors app, and it always starts, I left my door unlocked. I'm like, okay. So you know, that might be something as far as the newsletter, lock your door, you know. I mean, I'm not joking, it's like almost every other day I see that, yeah.
And I'll add one thing to that. So in the survey, they asked if they wanted to be contacted, or if they wanted more information on crime reduction programs. If they provided an email, our community resource team is reaching out to them to set up crime prevention and things like that.
There's about 100 of us.
Your Faith in Blue is where now again? CCA, Salvation Army?
Yes, and I will get that to you.
Okay, please.
I had a similar question to Councilmember Jones. And I'm always curious, again, because Castle Hills is such a new area, if we skewed these things, because it's new, where is the unknown, did we skew these negative from the Castle Hills, or is it?
Participation in Castle Hills is not where we'd like it to be. I think there's still residents are getting used to the idea of being a part of the Louisville family. So, yeah, there wasn't enough response from Castle Hills to skew the results. We did do a breakdown by zip code, and there was really no statistical variation in most cases among zip codes.
Thank you.
People are people, everywhere.
At least one.
I'd still like to see or explore taking some personal responsibility on lighting and making that part of the PEP program. If there's an opportunity there, I'd rather use that than putting large expensive light fixtures in that are on the city side. Just something to think about there. And then the other one, and I don't, I don't know if I forwarded to you or not, Chief, but I had a friend of mine who was over in Europe. And I know we're getting an idea from across the pond.
Oh, no.
But they actually had QR codes on all of the city light poles. And if the light pole was out, it said, scan this or go to this website.
That's a great idea.
And residents could then just report it. And it was right there at eye level. So it might be something to think about.
But we do have an app, which they could report it now.
Sure. And they can go that route. By the same token, this might, again, it's eye level and reminds them versus, because I've got friends who have the app, and it's like, did you put it on the app? Oh, I forgot I have the app.
And what happens now through the app, is when you submit it, of course, you've got to be able to locate it. And when people locate it, their location's not always 100% accurate, but if you get there, you can see. But then, we get that request, we don't maintain those lights for the most case. So we then forward that on to public services to whichever utility company it is, and it encourages them to do it. Potentially, a QR code could go straight to them and just copy us.
That would be so awesome.
And to, I get what your point is about the PEP program, but I'm not talking about any additional lighting. I mean, if you go to our intersections now, with the LED lights are so much brighter than what we've had before. It's just, as you go up the street, those are, the ones that we have now just need to be replaced.
Gotcha. Oh, so it's a contrast thing?
Right, because it is, the light that you get from those lights is nice.
Well, it's more directional, too. It's not just...
Well, it's like a yellow dull light versus...
Any other questions or comments, Chief?
On the dispatch thing, I guess, I know the dispatch job is a pretty tough job. It's kind of hard, but it seems like it's getting worse, though. Is this salary survey going to maybe help us, maybe see that maybe their pay is going to have to be raised to just bring in people to do this?
Yeah, so, yes, so if we will look at dispatchers like we look at everyone. I will say that we made a mid-year adjustment last fiscal year for dispatch, because we went out, and the market was moving so quickly in dispatch, because everyone's having this issue in dispatch. So we literally had made adjustments, I think, the year prior. And I mean, literally, we were like, we're definitely in market. There's no chance we're not in market. And then we looked, and we were well off market. I mean, because it's moving so quickly. So we made an adjustment mid-year, and we'll look at it with the compensation study as well. So it's, um...
So it's a run-up pretty high.
You know, it's really not. We deal with two types of people, it seems like. The people that make it through the program, they typically stay in the field. And we don't lose a whole lot of people to other agencies. We have lost some, especially more recently, whenever the
Salary changed.
Salary started going up really quickly. But, yeah, they typically stay for a long time if they're, if they get
If they're happy.
Yeah.
But sometimes, it's more than just the dollars. And I mean, is there something, some benefit that would help our dispatchers in the form of stress relief, like a specific targeted...
Do...
I'm sorry.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, even seriously, I thought this was a problem.
I brought up the goats, too, okay? Um, debriefing, yoga, something that's targeted for that particular job that could help them.
Yeah, we recently expanded some of our crisis mitigation stuff that was previously just for officers. We've expanded that to dispatch, as well as kind of letting them start their own program, so that it's eccentric to them, or centrifugal to them, and letting them run with that. And I think that's going to be a huge benefit, because they deal
See, I would like to see that go, because I remember that one time that I sat in there.
Yeah, they may not actually see the stuff that causes issues, but you know, hearing someone cry over the phone and beg for help, that'd be tough.
It's just the continuous intensity of every minute that they're working, you know?
So, yeah, they just recently, and the Chief's Advisory Committee had gone to Chief Deaver, and dispatchers had requested some type of, I can't remember what they called it. It wasn't a training, but it was really mental health
Right.
Assistance for, to prepare them to be able to handle this load. He funded it, like mid-year.
That's great. I mean, because they qualify under first responders.
And then the other thing I would say when we met with them is that they're like, our facility is old, and we're like, well, we're building
Oh, you're the Taj Mahal.
Brand new one.
And we need a massage table in there, too.
All right. And before things get out of hand, we have three minutes, and we're going to go ahead and close this workshop, and we will move out into the regular session here, starting at 7:00. Good evening. It is 7:00, and we'll call this meeting of the Louisville City Council to order regular session, and it is Monday, October 3rd. First up, I have invocation with Councilmember Green.
Please stand. Join me for a moment of quiet contemplation.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Please join me in the pledge to the American and Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right, I got a couple of proclamations, so I'm going to head down there. All right, who do I have here from the fire department tonight? Because we have Fire Prevention Week. Gentlemen, if you wouldn't mind joining me up here?
Good.
How are you, sir?
Good.
I'm doing great, thank you. Good to see you. Chief?
You doing all right?
All right. Awesome. All right, well, whereas in 2021, there were 337,500 home fires in the United States that caused 2,580 civilian deaths and over 11,000 civilian injuries, and whereas the city of Louisville is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, and whereas Louisville residents who have working smoke alarms and have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, whereas the 2022 Fire Prevention Week theme, Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape, effectively serves to remind the citizens of Louisville that it is important to have a home fire escape plan. Therefore, I, TJ Gilmore, Mayor of Louisville, Texas, do hereby proclaim October 9th through 15th, 2022, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this city, and I urge all people of Louisville to plan and practice a home fire escape for Fire Prevention Week 2022, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the Louisville Fire Department. And I am very grateful at the brevity and cleanness of this particular proclamation. It is very well-written and done. But this is Fire Prevention Week, the 9th through the 15th of October. Chief, do you have any words? Anything to add?
We have started our clown program in person again this year, so they started that this morning. And our guys are working very hard this month to get the word out for fire safety.
Outstanding, outstanding. So, yeah, we, emergency preparedness is all this month, so appreciate you guys. Stay safe out there, and thank you for all that you do. By the way, if you didn't notice, we just, October 1, got our
ISO rating number one.
ISO rating one, so. Great job, top of the top, and I know that's been a long time coming, so thank you, appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Next up, have I got anybody from KLB? There's somebody here from KLB, I think. Anybody? Anybody representing KLB? So, I don't know if you all know this, but this is Amy Wells's 18th anniversary with Keep Louisville Beautiful. So let's give her a hand on being out here at council tonight, and not partying it up for 18 years of dedication to Louisville. Oh, gotcha. Well, good, then keep that going. So I have to read this real quick-ish. Keep Louisville Beautiful proclamation for Keep Louisville Beautiful Week. Whereas charitable nonprofit organizations throughout Louisville save taxpayers thousands of dollars through their services and contribute significantly to the high quality of life of all of our citizens. And whereas Keep Louisville Beautiful brings together volunteers who contribute 10,000-plus volunteer hours annually, provides $299,500 in kind litter abatement and beautification services to Louisville, and removes 28 tons of trash annually from local parks, medians, and waterways. And whereas local affiliate Keep Louisville Beautiful is recognized by Keep Texas Beautiful and Keep America Beautiful for the organization's valuable mission-based work to engage citizens of Louisville through service and education to enhance their community environment. And whereas Keep Louisville Beautiful is a vital partner of the city of Louisville and consistently inspires community members to value the natural environment and enables their involvement and action through programs such as tree and wildflower plantings, recycling opportunities, citywide cleanups, and environmental education. And whereas the staff and volunteers of Keep Louisville Beautiful are dedicated to upholding the highest standards of community service, donating their time and effort to making a difference in the lives of others in our local environment. Therefore, I, TJ Gilmore, Mayor of the city of Louisville, Texas, and on behalf of the Louisville City Council, do hereby proclaim October 16th through the 22nd as Keep Louisville Beautiful Week. In the city of Louisville, I encourage all Louisvilleans to observe this day by connecting with friends, fellow employees, and relatives, and with religious, school, and civic groups to engage in projects benefiting their community. Let's give KLB a huge round of applause. We have the next generation here, which I remember, you know, leaving more trash than picking up, which is always great. Have you got a few words, Amy?
I just want to say thank you for your support. I appreciate it. And if you guys are interested, we have a couple of events coming up. October 20, or October 8, actually, next Saturday, we're going to be out at Leela, helping with prairie conservation projects. And then on November 11, or November 12, we'll be out at Lake Park doing our annual Trash Bash. So I encourage everybody to come out and volunteer and help keep our community clean and green.
Thank you, thank you. And I really want to thank the board, because I know the board has really expanded some of the scope. And we used to think of KLB as just recycling and just the Trash Bash, but you know, we see a lot more in wildflowers and native plantings, and looking at ways to expand the green spaces. And I think that's a wonderful, wonderful tool. Plus, y'all are getting great at the grant writing and bringing in those text transportation dollars are always a wonderful thing. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Maybe? Ah, look at that. Next up, public hearing. Public hearing, consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change from Specific Use, Landfill Operations, and Accessory Uses District SU zoning and Light Industrial District LI zoning to Specific Use, Landfill Operations, and Accessory Uses District SU zoning with two associated variances related to screening and dead-end street requirements two associated variances related to screening and dead-end street requirements on approximately 21.6606 acres legally described as Lot 1 Block A Republic Edition and 11.67 acres out of the P Higgins survey abstract 525 and .2336 acres of the SM Hayden survey abstract 537, generally located at the south end of Barfneck Lane and the west end of the Oak Tree Lane at 551 Huffines Boulevard as requested by Beatty Low, Republic Services, the property owner. Republic Services proposes an expansion to its fleet hauling facility by expanding the building, employee parking, and truck parking areas, and by adding outside storage areas for containers, truck fueling, truck repair shop, and a truck washing facility. Section 1729 of the zoning ordinance requires an engineering site plan to rezone the newly acquired property to specific use for landfill accessory use and to update the existing engineering site plan on the property currently zoned SU. The following two variances are requested with the engineering site plan. A, to allow chain link fencing with live screening in lieu of a solid screening device in the area where the screening requirements conflict with the floodplain, and B, to allow Oak Tree Lane and Barfneck Lane to have dead ends longer than 600 feet and to terminate Oak Tree Lane with an emergency access easement and gate in lieu of a cul-de-sac. The Planning and Zoning Commission upheld a public hearing and recommended unanimous approval four to nothing on September 6, 2022. It's recommended that the city council approve the ordinance and two associated variances set forth in the caption, and we do have Mr. Richard Lutke, our planning director, here to speak on the issue. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. During the final review of this agenda item, staff discovered that there were two slope easements that were needed on this site associated with the design of the future corporate drive, and so staff immediately reached out to the applicant and the local office, had no, no issues with dedicating these two easements as they do not really impact the site or the part of the site that they are improving, but they found out today that they do require approval from the corporate office. So therefore, we are just adding a condition to the approval tonight to kind of reinforce this dedication of these two needed easements, and the motion should be stated that condition be added for the addition of the dedication of two permanent slope easements for the future corporate drive, which are labeled as PSE 7A and PSE 7B on page 56 of Exhibit B, which is attached to the ordinance, and this property is, or the location of these easements are located along the north side of the future corporate drive right of way between the future extension of Huffines Boulevard and Holfer's Prairie Road. The applicant is also here this evening if you have any questions, and I also would gladly answer any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, are there any questions for Mr. Lutke? I do have Mr. Craig, and my apologies, Craig, I'm, I'm not great with the handwriting. Nicole Lajakchak?
Michael.
Michael Lajak, okay, got it. 8404 Jefferson Way, Lantana, here to answer questions on behalf of Republic Services. All right, I did give the ordinance language to Councilmember Meredith, so counsel, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to both the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Motion to close the public hearing passes six to nothing. Councilmember Meredith, would you mind making a motion?
Move to approve the ordinance and the two associated variances as set forth in the caption above, with the addition of the dedication of two permanent slope easements for the future corporate drive, which are labeled as PSE-7A and PSE-7B on page 56 of Exhibit B attached to this ordinance and located along the north side of the future corporate drive right of way between the future expansion of Huffines Boulevard and Holfer's Prairie Road.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately 21.6606 acres legally described as Lot 1 Block A Republic Edition, 11.67 acres out of the P Higgins survey abstract 525, and .2336 acres of the SM Hayden survey abstract 537, generally located at the south end of Barfneck Lane and west end of Oak Tree Lane at 551 Huffines Boulevard from Specific Use, Landfill Operations and Accessory Uses District zoning and Light Industrial District zoning to Specific Use, Landfill Operations and Accessory Uses District zoning. Correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the public interest and general welfare demand this zoning change and amendment therein made, providing for repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you please vote.
Okay. I'm sorry, my system seems to have locked itself up. Yes, I've lost connection, so if you all want to vote out loud, that would be fine.
All right, counsel, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Visitor Citizen Forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. I do have two requests. The first, Mr. Randy Canavell and Ms. Lori Fickling, our board president and chief executive of the Lewisville Area Chamber of Commerce. If you would, please state your name and address for the record, and we'd love to hear a little bit about what's going on.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Randy Canavell, Chairman of the Board for the Lewisville Area Chamber of Commerce for 2022, and join with.
Lori Fickling, President and CEO of the Lewisville Chamber. Oh, you name my address.
Please.
5301 Chin Chapel Road, Double Oak.
We just want to say thank you on behalf of the Chamber Board and the Chamber staff for the city's support, city council's support of everything we do at the Chamber in helping small business in this community grow, and so that's the first thing. The second thing, I'm going to hand over to Lori about some of our upcoming events that we partner with the city as well.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and friends. We just wanted to give a quick update, but first I want to say thank you to our police chief and fire chief. Tomorrow is Leadership Lewisville City Emergency Services Day, so they have a big day planned, and they do the work, and we just come and get, soak in all the experiences, so big thanks to them for that. And I wanted to talk about our upcoming women's conference. It's on Friday, October 14th, and our keynote speaker is Commissioner Bobby Mitchell, who's got a great story, and our, our theme this year is Harvest Success. Discover your passion, purpose, and potential. And we have a panel which includes our very own Claire Powell, City Manager, and Dr. Lori Rapp from the school district, and Nicole Jones from Mary Kay, as well as Bernice Mendez, you may know her, of the State Farm, that just relocated to Old Town. So please help us spread the word and bring women, as many women as you know. We're having it right down here at Sparrow on Main, and we're excited about that, it's a new venue for us. It's 10 to 2, and we would just love to have anyone come who's interested. We do have an event, October 26th, it's a Wednesday, is our Workforce Development Summit. We partner with the city of Lewisville, and Mayor Shell and, and staff are wonderful to work with us. We do several events a year with the city, and this Workforce Development Summit is at Valley, the Valley Creek Next Step Center, and TJ is going to moderate one panel, and we have another panel moderated by the Dallas College person, and then Tann Parker is our keynote speaker that day. So we'd love to have you there for that, and then in November, just for fun, we have a golf classic, and it's Monday, November 7th, at Lantana. In between that, we do have a luncheon on the 25th. Lewisville's native, Mark Deibner, who's the Director of Aviation at Love Field, is our keynote speaker that day. And then in December, we have a joint holiday lunch sponsored by Christian Community Action that we do with Flower Mount, and in addition to all of that, we do Business Connection events with the city of Lewisville, we do Leeds every Friday, our networking event, and we have a great thriving government affairs group that meets every, every month on the third Wednesday, and we have a Toastmasters group that we partner with the city of Lewisville on as well, second and fourth Thursday. So that's a lot of things, but I just wanted to echoes, echo what Randy said about how much we appreciate our partnership with the city of Lewisville and give a quick update.
Thank you.
Lori, they can, they can find all of these events online at the Chamber of Commerce site, right?
LewisvilleChamber.org or our new domain name, BestChamberinTexas.com.
Nice.
That's, you're supposed to laugh at them.
No, that's great. I mean, well, LISD did it first.
It's true.
So it's, it's a great, great one to mimic is the LISD, so that's really awesome. It is true.
We did mimic them.
It is true. And I do want to thank you guys, specifically, some of the events have been kind of circulating. I know last month or the month before, the Leeds were all done over in Castle Hills, in the Newcastle Hills neighborhood.
It was a great month.
So really appreciate the Chamber really looking to be that Lewisville area chamber, so really appreciate you guys doing that.
We, we did a, a deep dive last year, and we have about 35 different municipalities that are part of this Chamber of Commerce, so we really are the Lewisville area.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, thank you. Next up for public comment, I have Ms. Nancy Sansom and Priscilla, and I'm sorry, I don't, I don't see a last name here, but if you'd like to speak.
Thank you.
And name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
Nancy Sansom, 415 South Garden Ridge Boulevard, that's Lewisville, Texas, 975067. Before I begin, I would just like to ask the mayor's permission if it's all right, our second speaker would be accompanied by her daughter.
Absolutely.
This is our third, this is our third city council meeting, and we're pleased to be here, and we appreciate the time, and will not attempt to waste your time. Drew Murphy, a noted local journalist, has submitted a news release to the Denton Chronicle Community Impact TV stations, Star Media, including Lewisville and Flower Mount officials, plus the Cross Timbers Gazette. The focus of her article is on our Lewisville Seniors Outreach Group to communicate and work with the United Way, Serve Lewisville, Other Agency, and Officials. In addition, our purpose is to hold ongoing meetings and upcoming special events to bring attention to many of our seniors' plights. A copy of the news release is found in your hard copy, which I will give to Claire. As I mentioned, there is a hard copy of that news release in, inside your packet. I'll continue. Margaret Kahn, a very special member of our group and the daughter of one of our speakers, has set up a, a new Facebook website called Lewisville Senior Living Changes. The purpose is to help seniors to have a collective voice, to find and share resources and concerns, also to identify others in our community who may need assistance, or those who can help navigate seniors in this later stage of their lives. This is also in your packet. Okay, I'll just share with you, this is our logo we have developed for our group. So it's Lewisville, Lewisville Seniors Living Challenges. That's in your packet, too. Now, Margaret states, the purpose of our group is to help, is to help seniors have a collective voice to find and share resources and concerns, also to identify others in our community. To broaden our outreach, we are tentatively planning a Lewisville Seniors Living Challenges Conference scheduled for either early November or late October. We are expecting many vendors plus noted community speakers. In anticipation of the event, we'll be sending out emails to all Lewisville churches, PTA, legislators, and other agencies through email. Mayor Tim Brandon Jones remarked at our last meeting this Monday night in the Lewisville Library, he stated, "No one wants to see their grandparents in danger of not having a home." In conclusion, Delia Parker, a long-term attorney for the rights of others, recently stated, "Many more seniors are moving into poverty," and we asked this one question, "What can be done about it?" Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Priscilla Zog, and I live at 415 South Garden Ridge Boulevard, Lewisville, Texas. And this isn't just my story, but it's others that are in the similar situations. We've been at this address for two, little over two and a half years. My husband and I have been married for 67 years, and our supplement, our, our assistant insurance that we have for supplement is almost as high as my social security check, and it's hard to make the budget sometimes and to make ends meet. And so I'm, and then I also have a large dental bill that I had some teeth done, and I want to thank you for letting us share our stories with you tonight, and thank you very much, and thank you.
Appreciate you and, and all your, your stories and background, and it sounds like you guys are making some great headway to get your, get the word out, so glad to hear Item F, Consent Agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card, or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. City Secretary, do we have any e-commerce or speaker cards?
No.
Okay, I do have a request that we pull item four from the consent agenda, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item four.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you please vote. Consent agenda minus item four approved unanimously. Item four, approval of a resolution authorizing addenda between the city of Lewisville and CDBG-CV sub recipients adjusting award amounts and performance goals, and authorization for the city manager or her designee to execute the addenda. The city of Lewisville has CDBG-CV agreements in place with nonprofit partners to provide essential social services to Lewisville residents to help prepare, prevent, and respond to COVID-19. The agreements were approved by city council on November 1st, 2021. Agencies agreed to provide services, meet contract goals, and fully draw down funding reimbursements no later than December 31st, 2022, and due to various hardships, several award agencies are projected to not meet what is outlined in their agreement. City staff recommends an addendum to the agreements and reducing four agencies' award amounts and performance goals. I think City Manager Claire Powell has maybe some comments on this, or did counsel want to go?
I think there were counsel questions, and that's one.
Yeah, I'll, I'll open up. Thank you, Mayor. So in, in looking at this, there were, there are four organizations counting for almost a little over half a million dollars in funds to be distributed for COVID-19 relief across various categories, including mortgage assistance, food insecurity, and mental health. To date, less than 2% of those funds went out from that half a million dollars. It's, it's shameful and concerning that we've had such, so few dollars come out of those funds. I, I am okay with, with extending this forward, cutting the, the monies as proposed in the, in the proposal here, but I would like more accountability from those four groups in particular, including monthly reports on, on, on how they're doing. If they have questions, I expect hands to be raised. I don't understand how to use this money, I'm, I'm, I need some help, but I'd like that done monthly for these four organizations.
Mayor, we can def, we can definitely do that. We, staff receives monthly reports, in fact, it was staff that had basically determined that we needed to cut bait on some of this or redirect some of the money, so we're happy to do so on that.
I have a question. In a lot of our visitors forum on the mortgage assistance, does In lot of our visitors forum on the mortgage assistance, does that include rent or not?
It does not.
It does not. Okay.
And that mortgage assistance, right now, this is pulling money from them. In your next meeting, the reallocation would be provided to council. So we have addendum as well that are going to come forward that says, okay, and this money, you're taking this from them, but we're going to be reallocating it to folks that were nonprofits that applied for that CV funding to begin with.
Okay.
So we have a list of those. There's a wide variety of them that are in there.
So we'll be able to reallocate those funds to some of the other nonprofits?
Right now, Ashley Ferian had reached out to the nonprofits that are currently spending the money and said to the ones, basically asked, could you use some additional funds and could you get them spent in a timely fashion? And remember, you have to use it for COVID-related, too. And I believe it was Children's Advocacy Center and CASA both had said, "We can spend those dollars."
Claire, I had a question. Do we, I'm a little unclear on exactly what the issue is here. Is it conflicting? There's certainly a need, but it's not that there's not a need, right? So is it lack of advertising? Is it they're not really understanding what the criteria is? Is there, because, I mean, if I'm looking at how long have they had this, since November? So it's 10 months later, I'm sorry, 11 months later, and someone who has received $381,000 has only awarded $6250. I would actually recommend cutting their fee more, or the funds that they have, I think we're probably saying that we're going to adjust it to maybe close to half of what it is. If they've only given $6250 and they only have two months left...
That's not very many mortgages.
So they have until 2023. So we had set a date of 2022, just an internal date for us to make sure that we were checking to make sure they were spending it.
That's a very large leap, though, from $6250 to $187,500. I'm not having the confidence if we can't identify what the problem is, why they're not giving out this money, and how to remedy it. I feel like we could probably hand it to people who can get it out to the people, and it's, I don't want people to have to wait until December 2023. People need this assistance now.
So for each one of them, there's a different barrier that created this issue, based on what they've represented to us. So for BCL of Texas, which is who you're talking about primarily, they lost a key staffer in the pandemic. Once we gave this money to them, they lost that staff and didn't have someone to work the project. So as everyone's had trouble hiring, that was what their issue was. So they have now hired a person who is, my understanding is actively working and is spending money for reimbursement at this point. So when talking to them, it was, okay, now you're staffed. How much money do you feel realistically you can spend? And that was the dollar amount that they provided to us that they feel like they can get done. So there was a change there.
But we can track it monthly, and if they're not on that track, then we can pull more back.
We can pull, yeah, in three months. I would say we'll do monthly reports, and every three months, we'll have a check-in as to whether or not, if you're not making progress, then we can reassess that and bring it back to council. The last one, I think you pronounced it KESID, I think, they also had problems, as you're aware, there's been a lack of enough professionals for mental health to provide therapy and things like that in a community. And so this one has, I mean, they had posted a job and could not hire someone to provide these services in our community. So they've just recently hired someone, is my understanding. And so again, the same situation as BCL.
So when it relates specifically to BCL, because that's such a large dollar amount, it's almost $400,000. It's 75, 80% of the total number we're looking here. To have all the money backed up by one person, I'd love to see contingency. If this person they've hired now quits in a month, are we in the same place? I'd like them to think through what a contingency is if that person now goes and make sure we're not back in the same spot that we're in now. I do want to point out, and please correct me if I'm wrong here, that in looking at these, there's $120,000 that are directly or indirectly related to CCA. Is that accurate?
Yes.
If you want to explain the food.
For me to provide background for the rest of council, that is correct. So CCA mortgage assistance is only $60,000. Now, the issue there, talking to CCA, was that they felt that, I think their interpretation of what is, has to be COVID-related might be a little bit more harsh than what I think HUD or what the city would be requiring, but I think there might, and I think the mayor was saying there might be a communication issue there. They've been requiring, my understanding from Ashley was that they require a positive COVID test to be able to even trigger that you go, you get the dollar amount.
That is crazy. I'm sorry, but that's just nuts.
So I think there's just a logistics administrative issue there, but with that mortgage assistance, their main concern was it needs to be COVID-related, and how are we going to spend that when COVID is now an endemic and not a pandemic? So I think there are some, I think there was just a lack of communication between staff as well as them as to what could qualify, because my understanding is HUD is pretty intentionally broad about what that could be. Now, what Councilman Kelly was commenting on is the Friends of Shiloh Gardens. So Shiloh Gardens is a large community garden that's up in Denton. It's the size of a football field. It's a humongous facility. And so we, because of food insecurity was an interest to council, we partnered with them through a contract that they were going to provide food to Lewisville residents. Now, they don't provide food directly to the end user, the people that are going to eat, so they were basically shipping it to CCA, who then was being, because they have a refrigerated unit, and then other food pantries would get it from CCA. And my understanding is that their, CCA was not able to move the, or the other food pantries were not able to move the food fast enough during COVID. And so there was some spoilage of food, and so Shiloh Gardens basically said, "We're not providing as much, we're not going to provide as much food if you can't distribute it appropriately, because it's just going to waste." So that was my understanding of what's happened there. So I think, again, it's a logistical thing. Now, in talking with CCA, their concern was that when you have these CDBG funds, you have to show that you're actually getting the money or getting the food and services to a Lewisville resident. You have to pre-qualify people. So the problem is when you've got, when we've got to do that reporting, if I've got strawberries that I've picked, and strawberries that I get because I get donations, I could buy it from a grocery store at their supermarket, one strawberry I can just take without any barriers to entry, and the other one I have to fill out a form for because of CDBG funds. I think, again, there might be some logistical things that could have been worked through there, but that was the main concern that was expressed to me today.
I do want to point out that I do think that CCA has other grants that they're fulfilling better on outside of these two. Is that accurate?
Yes.
And I've been a fan of CCA for many years. That's why maybe I'm so disappointed in these two, because I know they're valuable members of the community, and we've given lots of donations across these to CCA. That's who we go to first usually as a family, but that's all the more reason why this is disappointing. My hope is that, and I hear what's being said, but after 11 months, we're just now hearing, oh, we didn't know how to distribute the food. That's so concerning. It should have been month two, month three, month four, month five, and that's what I'm looking for going forward, is raise your hand, say, "I need help," and let us help you figure this out. That's my ask for these four in particular.
I have a question on reallocating. So the money that's reallocated, it's just for other nonprofits that were approved in the beginning for something else?
For the COVID funding? So basically, we had a list of nonprofits that received all of our COVID funding, and so we could go out and do a whole new process again, but that takes time, and I think the idea is to get this money on the street as fast as possible. So our, I think staff's direction has been to try to reallocate it amongst the folks that are spending it in our community.
Okay. Do we have other food insecurity nonprofits out there that could use the food insecurity funds that were approved for the COVID funding?
We did have some other agencies. We just originally reached out to agencies that we knew were spending money quickly because we wanted to get the money out the door. So the two agencies we'll be bringing to you next week, we know they can spend the money quickly. So there is going to be additional funds. They're not receiving the entire funding we're taking back from these agencies, so there is some extra funding that we can look at, the food insecurity agencies, too.
I guess my question is, are there other agencies that qualified under the first cycle that are under mortgage assistance or food insecurity or mental health? Or are we giving that funding to something completely different?
So there was, there were only two agencies that were awarded that received funding for the mortgage assistance, and those are the two agencies that are on that list. There are some other agencies that received funding for food insecurity, and the two agencies that we'll be bringing next week are mental health, in the mental health category.
And Ms. Ferian, it's been a while since I've been on CDBG, but my history tells me that the process is typically, we find the folks who have already applied, who meet the criteria and have the reporting wherewithal, and we go back to them and say, hey, we have additional funding. Then we let them inform us how much they think they can get through.
Correct.
So that's why it would concern me if we defunded, because then that would create more money that we'd have to push through this rather narrow or narrow-ish constriction. The other piece is, we typically would, if we had, we knew we were going to bump up against federal timelines, we would go back out and restart that process as a backup, so knowing that we weren't going to meet or we didn't have the partners with the ability to do the heavy lift. I think what would help council is if we could kind of get, I hate to call it a Gantt chart, but a little bit of a timeline that just shows, here's the spend, here's where we think we can get to, and here's potential gaps where we may have to backfill with a new process. Have any?
The only reason I pulled my mic closer here is that I wanted to make sure we have somebody who's signed up to make a motion here. Do we have to append this motion with all the things we talked about to make this official?
I don't think we have to do that to get monthly reporting or anything from staff. I think staff is clear on what we want, but we do need to have a resolution to spend the money in this new format.
I just don't want to see certain areas get zero funding when people need those services, and then everything is put towards something else, as long as it's the services in which, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, you want to make sure that the needs are covered.
We need the food insecurity. It's huge right now.
Well, as...
We definitely need the mental health, you know, and the mortgage assistance, but I don't understand why it's not mortgage slash rent assistance. I would like to look into that.
I want to jump in and say, first, I think we need to understand what the rules are behind the COVID spending, because it's very specific, and we want to make sure that we meet those guidelines.
Absolutely.
I have no problem, honestly. If they can't spend in 11 months, that's problematic, but, you know, we do have an area of need, and we know what that area of need is. Now, what we don't know is, are those funds eligible to be used for the need that we know about? That's what I would like to know in the next week, is can we use those funds to help folks? Because we do have a way to distribute it through United Way, because they have some processes to do that. I would just like to know more about that. I will go with this motion for right now, but I agree with Councilman Kelly. You know, this is a concerning issue with this grant, and we have to get these funds spent, and we know we have people who need it, so whatever we have to do to expedite that spending, let's do that. So I'm going to go with the, I'm going to support the motion. I'm also going to agree with that we need to have monthly reporting from them, and in three months' time, if we don't see some kind of significant movement, we need to pivot on any funding.
And I do believe there are, this CV tranche of money is specifically locked to mortgages. I think that's more so than...
All right.
And federal funds, I know they're very specific.
Well, I think we also allocated other funds to rent assistance as well.
Okay, yes. I would like to push another little caveat under what he said, is the fact that we need a good, clear grading system on how, not just COVID funds, but this is, where are you? Oh, this is, this has come to light because we're up against the wall on a deadline, okay? And the last thing any of us want to do is give the tax dollars that, or for our citizens here, back to Washington, DC. But I would like to see some sort of audit or grading or something on all of the nonprofits that we fund and where they lay on their reports, on their timely spending, on complaints, on any of that stuff. I want to see, you know, we might need to go harvest some of the other ones out there and say, "Look, we know that we've always, always funded these. Maybe these people have gotten a little laxadaisical because they expect all of their funding anytime they come through our doors." Well, times have changed, and we have bigger and brighter things out there, just as well in the nonprofit world, that are putting their feet to the pavement and getting things done that could use this help. And if they're not willing to step up to the plate for any funds across the board, then let's go on down to the road to the new shiny star down here that will fight for every dollar and make sure every dollar is spent.
And to back up our CDBG, I know that they do rank and look at history and those types of things. I don't know exactly how formal it is to a letter grade, but I do know that it impacts decisions on who gets funded year over year. So I would say that something like that is, in my opinion, not an urgent, but it's an important.
Pretty important.
But I'd rather, if we've got limited man-hours, I'd rather, let's deal with the current and then come back and kind of give us an overview. Maybe there's an opportunity for a CDBG review for council.
That's what I was going to suggest.
So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm sorry, can I say one more thing here?
One more thing.
One more thing. So what I'd love to see happen here, actually, so we have seniors that have come out here for three meetings, and I know they've had other meetings outside of coming here to speak, is that perhaps we can meet with the seniors, and given the broad effects of COVID, maybe while we can't give rent assistance to the seniors directly, maybe there's other assistance that could offset some of the money they were spending on other things that would allow them to pay rent. So maybe there's something that we can work through in that area.
We can look into, again, we'll have to target it towards COVID.
I understand, yeah. We can draw that line somewhere and free up money for food insecurity, provide food that could use that money now for rent. Just creative thinking around, maybe we solve a couple of problems here.
All right.
And that's it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Or you got a motion?
I move to approve the resolution as presented in the caption.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Council, please vote.
Oh, my gosh. Where am I?
Or are we still locked out? There we go. Motion passes six to nothing. Thank you, staff, for the time. I know this is always difficult to come to council and say, hey, we've got to backtrack on something, but I appreciate you all and all the work that you're doing, and so does council.
Yes, we do.
Item 11, Regular Hearing. Consideration of Variance to Lewisville City Code, Section 6-103, Access Management Regarding Driveways on Lot 1, Block A of VFW Edition as requested by Robert Schneberg, Gonzalez and Schneberg Engineers and Surveyors Incorporated on behalf of the owner. The subject site is a 3.251-acre lot zoned light industrial within the VFW Edition located in 997 State Highway 121 Business. The owner is proposing to demo the vacant VFW building to build five new office warehouse buildings with a total building area of 56,200 square feet. Staff is reviewing the engineering site plan. The owner is requesting the following variance to reduce the required driveway spacing to 91 feet instead of the required 230 feet on Long State Highway 121 Business. Is recommended that the city council approve the variance request as set forth in the caption above, and we do have Mr. David Salmon, our city engineer, available for questions. And council, I don't know if you've been out there, but this is really the only access point to that particular space, so...
Well, I was just going to clarify that, looking at the engineering site plan exhibit in the backup, the driveway itself, they're actually not touching. Is that correct? So the existing driveway is not being improved? It's...
No, it simply is, it's an existing driveway, and it's simply going to remain.
Yes, so the connection to 121, it's existing?
Yes.
So this is just a formality for us to approve this variance as an existing condition?
Yeah, because it does not meet the code, yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes, okay. So with that, I, I move to approve the variance as set forth in the caption.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Council, if you'd please vote. Motion passes six to nothing. Item H, reports. Reports about items of community interest regarding which no action will be taken. Councilmember Troyer?
Yes, I have a number of items for the Lewisville Grand Theater. First of all, excuse me, performances. We have an artist showcase presented by the Dallas, Dallas Desi Damica on October 6th. And then this, for this Friday night, October 7th, is the acoustic jam songwriting challenge with the word mystery as the requirement for every song that is presented. This is presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville, which is, also presents the acoustic jam sessions every Friday night. This, the songwriting challenge is part of that, that jam session. Then activities going on at the, at the theater. The Visual Art League of Lewisville Pan Pastel Workshop going on, is going on October 4th and 5th. There is a career fair, the career fair is presented by the City of Lewisville, October 6th. Free art workshop, design and painting and watercolor presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville on October 8th. And another Visual Art League art talk, golden products demo on October 11th. And then exhibitions going on. Mystery Metals Art and Photography by Tina Alvarez presented by the City of Lewisville, now through October 29th. Bramblett From the Beginning presented by the City of Lewisville through the, through October 22nd. And Limited Palette presented by Visual Art League of Lewisville, now through October 22nd. And that is all I have.
Thank you, sir. City Attorney? City Secretary?
Yes, sir.
Officer, thank you for being here. Appreciate you. What do we got? Nothing in planning? We're not planning for anything?
That's a big step on the horizon.
No report, Mayor.
No report, Mayor.
Lake level reports. Lewisville Lake is currently at 517 and a half feet, and that is just shy of 80% of capacity right now.
Oh, we've lost quite a bit here in the last couple of weeks.
Yeah, it hasn't rained in over a month, I believe, so.
Nothing to report, Mayor.
So in Lewisville, we have such a spirit of teamwork amongst all our departments, but police and fire work really well together, but we gladly set that aside one day a year. So if you're available on October 15th, we have the Battle of the Badges softball tournament. It's really reached a fevered pitch, the trash talking and competition. In fact, the, wouldn't say there's physical or anything like that, but this small helicopter they fly the Chiefs in is not big enough for the trash talking. So they actually were having to put the assistance in there this year just for the safety of the pilot. So it's going to be a great day. It's a good fundraiser for a needy organization, but come out and watch the fire department win if you can. If we don't, I'll have to eat a lot of crow.
Yeah, last year's still under protest, by the way. A couple of events coming up, I want to remind the public that tomorrow is National Night Out. Most of our events are between 6:00 and 8:00 PM, and we will have officers out in all the neighborhoods that have planned events. And then this weekend is our first year participating in the National Faith in Blue Weekend, and that will be from October 7th through the 10th. On Friday, October the 7th, at 10:00 AM, we will be at CCA. And then we will have a town hall that night from 7:00 to 9:00 PM, and that will be at the Servant House Church, and that is at 911 West FM 3040. And we'll have some equipment out there as well. And then the Monday, October 10th, between 11:00 and 1:00, we will be at Salvation Army Community Policing Project, and there we will help with food distribution.
Thank you. Ms. Ferris?
Just quickly, and I'll probably hit this again next council meeting, but we have the annual fall festival in Castle Hills, shops in the plaza, October 22nd, music, bounce house, hayrides, and overall, just a lot of good fun. So if you haven't been out to one, please join me out there on the 22nd. That's an all-day event, too, by the way.
Are you guys gonna skip me?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to, I just wanted to give a shout out to our, our parks and tourism and our public works guys, all staff for, I know that like the month of September has been, y'all probably, from a lack of sleep, don't really remember it. So after Western Days, I was walking my dog in, in the plaza, and I kind of came upon a couple of parks guys talking about how many hours they had worked within the last week between Western Days and PBR, and then the, you know, the parades. I think this was before the homecoming parade, which I know there's a lot of cleanup, and there's a lot of stuff that has to happen like immediately to get the road blocked off, and then to undo the, the road, all the barricades. And just amazing work that these, these employees are doing. They're doing it quick, efficiently, and they're doing it with a severely reduced number of people. And I just wanted to, I told them both, we appreciate you so much. I wanted to extend that and say it more in a public fashion. I also wanted to mention that the city is having a career fair this coming Thursday at the Grand Theater. And we've got a lot of positions we're hiring. And the, the city offers a great, this is a great place to be. And I'm just, I'm just saying that from an outsider looking in. Come on out if you're looking for a job, or maybe if you've got a job you don't like very much, and you want to come work for the city, encourage you to do so. And that is from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Grand Theater.
Oh, you're not gonna skip? Awesome.
No, 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 not this time. I got it. I wrote it down.
I just want to send a shout out to our seniors who are, who are working on, on an issue that we just became aware of and we're, we're working for. I want to thank Gary Henderson, President of United Way of Denton County, who came out and did a presentation last, last Monday, where they have a program, I believe it's called ARM II, that is helping people who are in need for rental assistance. Obviously, the first tier are people who have a, a notice of eviction, but he also, he said he's going to try to push up our seniors into the second tier. I believe the applications are supposed to start this week. Once I get more information on that, I'll push it out on my social media. For anyone, you don't have to necessarily live in Lewisville. If you live in Denton County, make sure you get in touch with Nancy Sansom and join their Lewisville Senior for Fair Low and Fixed Income Housing, so that we can work. I'll continue to advocate. I've talked to a couple, I've talked to a state senator this Saturday, and to a state representative. I'm going to continue to do so with our state reps and state senators to try to advocate, to try to see if we can find some help for our seniors.
Thank you. And I'd like to echo what Kristen said, too. We have, I think, I may be a little biased, but I don't think so. We have, we've got the best city and the best staff ever. And I appreciate all of, all of y'all, after all you had to put up with me. So I really appreciate you. There's been several people that have moved into town, and they've had some interaction with city staff, or members of the council, or our city manager. And the first thing that they've said is, oh, my gosh, somebody actually called me back. You know, inside a three-week timeframe. And I'm like, but it's good to hear those things. And like I said, I'm a little biased, but I do think that we have one of the best cities here. I would also like to say that this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and this happens to men as well as women. During my chemo, there were a lot of men getting their chemo, too. So I would like to stress, 3D mammograms, pay the extra money for them, they will catch what the others will not. And early detection is the difference between surviving and not surviving. So please, take care of yourself out there. Visit Lewisville.com. On that site, they have the First Fridays information, which is coming up this weekend, by the way, and the Lila Bird Walk that's on the 8th. They have all of the information on that site. And I was going through lot item by lot item, because to be real honest, yes, I've lived here 50-something years, and I'm on the city council, but this is the first time I've been on that site. And I was amazed at all the information on that for people that have lived here that want to know exactly what's going on. Do you know that there is almost bingo night almost every night of the week at different restaurants in Lewisville? Did you know that?
Mm-hmm.
Neither did I. And I love me some bingo. But that's, that's, and I, I like your, that is for breast cancer awareness, right? And for Nikki. I like that. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Meredith?
First of all, if you haven't seen the Bramblett exhibit at the Lewisville Grand Theater, you need to really see that. This is a former Lewisville resident currently living in Denton, but currently is blind, but it's a truly amazing thing, if you haven't seen his artwork. Some library activities for the week. Hispanic Heritage Celebration for Families with Children of All Ages, Tuesday, October 4th, 6:00 to 7:00 PM, the Bennett Program Room. Ticket is required. Sublimation Demo Come and Go Event for All Ages, Thursday, October 6th, 6:00 to 7:30 PM. No registration required at the Hive Maker Space. And Story Stroll, Storytime at Central Park for families with children of all ages, Friday, October 7th, 9:00 to 9:30 AM. No registration required at Central Park.
Thank you, sir. City Manager?
I, I just wanted to thank staff for all of their amazing, hard work over the last month. Like everyone said, I will say that when I'm out there working parades and I have my cap on, no one can really tell who I am.
Awesome.
It's pretty awesome, because you can see how employees really treat the average person, and not just, you know, the city manager. And it's always with respect, and it's always with a smile on their face, and that just makes me really proud.
That's a great team. A few thank yous. Number one, homecoming specifically. What, what, nobody does homecoming like Lewisville does homecoming. It's amazing. If you didn't get a chance, make sure you come out this next year, because it will come again. Do want to also thank Westside Baptist Church for the invitation. They actually, for the celebration of the historic black colleges and universities, they actually had Prairie View A&amp;M's marching band in the sanctuary. I love me a marching band, but that was impressive. So want to thank them for that. It was, it was a great day. I also want to thank my, my city council for all the events and conferences that we have on our calendars coming up. I really appreciate you all taking the time to get, take that extra time, because we all have full-time jobs. And for you guys to go out and take that extra time to learn and find out what other cities do, are doing, and bring best practices back, I think is awesome. Councilman Meredith and I are heading to Texas Municipal League down in San Antonio this week, and that's another place where we have the opportunity to advocate for elected officials that are at the state and federal level. So we're going to be doing that while we're, while we're down there and learning and picking up new ideas. So really excited about all that. But I want to thank you guys. I do not have anything for our closed session. And since there is no, oh, wait, I do have one more. We did get an award this past, this past Saturday, as from the Native Prairies Association of Texas. Lewisville was the first city to receive the City Land Stewart Award for our broad integration of open spaces into our 2025 Vision Plan. I may have recommended they come and do their event at Lewisville next year and thrive and take in the Thrive Nature Park, but Ms. Anaya might have twisted my arm a little bit. But great organization, and we, we're doing great things in the city, and we're being recognized for it. So I would really appreciate all of staff's work on that. As there is no additional action to be taken on tonight's agenda, this meeting is hereby adjourned. And it is 8:01.